Well, all right. Should we get started then? Are we?
Yeah. All together.
Okay, well, we have a pretty full consent agenda. Hopefully, everybody's had a chance to review the items, the reports and the minutes that are in this. Do we have any, is there anybody that has any questions or comments about anything that was in there? Not, or even if there is, can I have a motion to accept a consent agenda?
Joe, motion.
A second.
Jenny. I'll second it.
Okay, all right, great. So if there is no further discussion, a pause, then all in favor?
Aye.
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 And carried. Okay. Next item of business is the, is the financial statements. And any, any discussion on this? Those of you on the committee, anything we should be looking at here in particular with regard to the statement?
No, we reviewed the statements. As far as we were concerned, as a committee, they're in order.
Okay.
Kind of close to where we would have anticipated they would be, even considering that we're in this very different year. So the finance committee, if you've looked at them, has, maybe you have questions, but recommends that we accept the financial statements for September 2020.
That's a motion. Can I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Okay, I don't want to cut anybody short if you have any comments or questions. If not, then I would say, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, moving our long the agenda, approve the claims for September.
Right.
And you've already done that according to your-
We have, we've done that too, yep.
All right.
They're, they're approved as we go along because
Okay.
Pay the bills.
That's right.
Doesn't mean that if anybody has questions about anything, please do ask, but we, as a committee, are recommending that we accept the claims that already happened.
Okay. Take that as a motion.
Okay.
And a second? Anybody?
Second.
I'll second it.
Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we are moving right along here. Employee handbook. Jenny, would you like to give it, yeah, I know you've been putting time into this?
Yeah, um, so I just sent it out in case people hadn't received the original handbook email or able to, I put it in my Dropbox and then I save it on a PDF so I can look at it. It's very thorough.
Yeah.
And I did talk to Lisa about it way back when we first looked at it. Um, and there's a lot of detail in there. I can't think of any stone that was left unturned about anything could possibly happen. Um, and you know, it looks dramatic, but at the same time, you'd never know what's going to pop up. So, um, I was, I felt very reassured after I talked to Lisa about it because I thought, well, people are going to be like, what? But part of this rollout is going to be an explanation by the people that developed it with Lisa, with the staff. So there's going to be some training or orientation so they understand it and how it should be used. Um, so I, I have no problem with it. And I know that we're talking today about that handbook, but we're not talking specifically, we're not addressing at this meeting, the time off for part-time employees. So that part we wouldn't be considering at this meeting. But I wondered if anybody else had, had a chance to read it or had any feedback on it or thoughts?
I haven't looked at it recently, so I don't feel I can make, it's been a while, okay?
Very well done. It's very well done. I have to say.
I mean, looking at it, I thought it was extremely thorough. It seems like, you know, I mean, on the one hand, you're trying to cover all bases, but not make it so specific that you're
Aerials.
Yeah, things, things that are like, there's to be some sensible judgment in all of it as well. But I mean, it seemed to be very thorough and it looks like a lot of work and a lot of effort went into this stuff.
Dinet worked very hard with, with the HR consultant. So didn't, there were a lot of parts in here that could be attributed to Dinet.
Yep.
Okay.
I saw that. I kind of saw that.
The other thing that, I mean, you have it in a doc format or a PDF format, but the, I recently saw some, some organizations, and it might be corporate, but even not-for-profits, putting their employee handbook on, on a Trello board, Jenny.
I know. I sort of played with it.
Yeah, and so I think that would be really cool to do in the future, just as a, to wait, to make it accessible in a different way. But that's way down the path.
Trello, everybody. T R E L L O. It's a nice sandbox and document holder.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a fee for that? Or is that, that's, that's a freebie?
You can use, you know, a portion of it for free and then you could always power up.
Yeah.
If you want more, you know.
Well, it just seems like, I mean, 60-plus pages of, of information. Will each, so each employee will get a copy of this? Or will it be just a digital copy and you'll keep, keep one or two of them on file in the, in the library, correct?
Right, that's what we did with the original one. I had, I had like three printed. One stays here in my office and then we had one in the staff room and one at the circulation desk. And seeing employee handbook is on our public drive that everybody has access to. I don't think anybody looks at it, but it's if anybody wanted to look at it, it's there.
But I think, you know, Ted, Ted, what tends to happen is that people look at it when, when an issue arises.
Right, right, exactly.
It's, it's like, it's like if you have a contract with someone to do something. Well, if that person does what he or she is supposed to do, you don't bother, you know, you don't go back to the contract. But anyway, so it's, it's, it's good. It's good to have. It seems extremely thorough from everything I've seen of it. And Jenny, as you said, will be addressing, the person, the PTO will be addressed and will be revised as well and it'll come before the board and after the first of the year?
I would really like it to be by the end of this year because paid time, paid time off, it helps with the calendar year.
Okay.
So I'd like to be able to implement whatever our new policy is, starting in January.
Okay.
And then related to the paid time off, our, our current policy is that people are not allowed to carry over any paid time off. And I hope it's okay with you guys, given that we have everybody working on alternate week schedules. People have been able to use their paid time off and I'd really like them to be able to carry it over into 2021.
Okay, so that's someone that'll have to be hammered out.
Right.
But I, I think there's, I think that's, I mean, from my perspective anyway, that one concern I would have about PTO is that there ought to be a limit as to how much you can carry over. Because one, you want to encourage people to use the PTO. You don't want them to not go away and take vacations and take sick time.
Right.
The other thing is that if, if and when the person retires or leaves, it could be a fairly large financial responsibility, you know, if PTO is unlimited.
Right, and, and this year is just a crisis year because of the pandemic and how, how the year has happened. And the fact that people are, if you only work, you know, 15 or 20 hours a week, every other week, you just haven't used your paid time off for 2020. So that's it. It's just this year.
So it'd be a one-off.
Yeah, one-off for just this year, carrying your 2020 PTO into 2021. And I did run a report to see what people's balances are. Obviously Jill and I are the ones that have more vacation time than anybody else as full-time employees. But the rest of the people, for the most part, don't, you know, don't have more than two weeks of whatever it is they work. What, if they work 10 hours a week, then they have 20 hours of paid time off. So I could get that report to you, but I just, because we're talking about paid time off, I wanted you to know that that's something that is, that people are asking about. And we're going into November and December. There's a lot of holidays.
Right, right.
How much time can people take off and can we still be open if everybody is taking? So, so there's, there's weird-
You don't want them all scrambling to take it off at the same time before the end of the year. So.
And maybe it's, you have to take, you have to take it off by, you know, May 1st or March 31st or something in 2021. You don't necessarily have to have the whole of 2021 to take it, but I can, I'll, I'll send you more information when I get it. But I, because you mentioned, that's something that's come up.
So who will be, who will be addressing this? Is, is there, I mean, there is a, folks have been looking, Jenny, you've been looking at this with others?
No, I mean, I have, I have, so you're saying what committee does this fall under?
Yeah, who's, who's looking at this? Is this executive?
Okay, I thought it was, is it my committee? Oh.
Okay.
I'll make it.
All right, then we'll-
I wasn't sure it was our committee or the executive committee.
All right, then we'll-
Executive committee absorbed personnel.
Okay, yes. That was where my confusion was. Okay, all right.
All right, well, we'll set, uh, let's try to set something up then within the next couple of weeks.
Okay, I'll, I'll get some out for everybody.
So are you saying for our, for the board governance committee to take a critical look at the employee handbook and not have a vote on it tonight? Or are you talking about the PTO?
Larry? I think we were just talking about the PTO.
Okay, all right, okay.
So I think the rest of the handbook, I, I think we can go ahead and we can move on the handbook. I think that the only question is the PTO and how we handle that for this year and moving forward. My, is that, is that how you read it, Lisa? I believe that's what the intent is here.
Yes.
Yeah. So, so are there, are there any other questions or issues with regard to the handbook minus the PTO?
I don't think so.
It sounds like it. So, so then we'll need a motion to accept the, the changes to the, to the handbook as presented?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we are carried unanimously and thank you all for having a look at this. It's, it's been a long work in progress. Okay, so discussion items, then library updates.
I tried to include everything in my characters report, which was a lot longer than I had planned on.
It was very thorough and with lots of, lots of information.
There.
Yeah, lots.
Six pages worth.
I know, there's a lot, there's a lot going on. And, and it's, it's starting to get to be pretty overwhelming and I am tending to drop balls, like forgetting to send the agenda. Do you have any specific questions? We're on target to open for express browsing starting next Monday. The public bathrooms won't be open. And that's really been the number one thing we've been focused-
No pun intended.
Geez, so that's, that's been the focus now. I, we, the clutter guys were here on Friday and moved more furniture out. Tomorrow is our trustee election, so that's another big thing. Jackie's been working hard to make sure we observe whatever COVID regulations we have to observe. And we're just plugging away at reopening the trustee election and some of the stuff related to our building projects. So I'm working on the, finishing up the paperwork I need to do, Larry, for the historic resources review board. I really wanted to submit that tomorrow, maybe.
Sure.
If I can. I'm waiting for a call back from Holly Glor. I did have a telephone conference with Lisa Hayes today and over some of the information that she shared. And I did send that out to the building committee. She, you know, the draft specs, some draft floor plans. She's still waiting for, she is waiting for Joe Kime to send information about windows. And then there's some other mechanical things that she needs and she met with the flooring people today. So anyways, I have, I have a list of things I need to do for her. She has a list of things to get back to me and we're, we're moving ahead.
Okay. Very good. I, Lisa, I don't, I don't remember seeing the, the plans and specs, so well, I'll take another look.
Okay, I thought I sent it to the building committee, but
Yeah, but-
Sent it as a Dropbox link because
Okay.
So there was-
It's a large, it's a large file. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And for those of you who are not familiar with H, HRAV or Historic Resources Review Board is a local body that reviews all work that's being done in the local historic district on South Street. And there are also additional properties that are listed that are historically significant in the community, which includes the Seymour Library. Uh, and so any work that we're doing has to go before the, before the board for review and approval. Now, we already have State Historic Preservation Office approval for the work. So this should just be a matter of, of keeping them informed. There's nothing we're doing in the building that, that impacts any, any of the historic fabric of the, of the, of the building. I think there is a bit of a gray area at times when, when you're dealing with exterior versus interior, but because this is a public space, you know, there tends to be a little more oversight in terms of what happens on the inside. So we're submitting this to HRAV and I think our meeting is in a couple of weeks.
November 10th.
Yeah, and so we'll be reviewing this with them and don't anticipate any issues, but you know, we'll see. And it's a matter of just going through the motions.
Larry, I'm just, just to be clear again with the, the number of projects.
Yeah.
So this is just relating to the children's room or that's already been submitted?
Yes.
This is just the children's?
Just the children's room.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Nothing beyond that in terms of the lobby?
That was my question too.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, this is-
No, because we're not, we're not in a position where, you know, we have the go-ahead, we have the money, we have to go ahead to, you know-
Do any more.
Do any more work on it. So at this point, you know, let's, let's get more, let's get it authorized. Get the money, get it authorized, get it underway. And about the same, at about the same stage, we'll present, maybe a little bit earlier, but we'll present this to the-
So, so their main interest would be, again, the build, the building itself and not so much, you know, what's, what the area is going to be used for.
No, 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 that is completely out of their jurisdiction.
Right. So what, so what, can, can you anticipate that they would say anything?
No, I, no, the only thing they would, you know, but the only thing they would object to would, would be what Chippo would object to. And then that is that we're, we're removing or destroying or somehow compromising the original historic resource. You know, and, and it's primarily on the exterior, but like I said, since this is a public building, there is some precedent for, you know, weighing in on what happens on the inside. But in terms of use and function and layout and, you know, whether the, you know, the handicap lift should go here or there, they have no business commenting on any of that.
Right.
What they would comment on was, oh, you're removing the fireplace. What? You can't do that. We, we, you know. So I would say that would be where they, where they would weigh in. And we're not doing anything. We are adding a couple of windows, but again, there's, there's reason for that. And there are windows in the 1972 additions, which not even impacting the original building.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Yep.
Other questions about anything in my director's report or things that are going on? Joe, I'm sorry, the absentee ballot was so confusing, but it's been confusing right along. So we, we, I think we have about 10 or 12 absentee ballots that have come in. So I'm glad we've been able to work out all of the details legally about how that happens for future elections. This was a good year to give it a try. But it's just a lot. There's a lot going on.
So Lisa, for the, the election itself, with people coming to the library tomorrow, what is the process going to be? How, are you going to let a certain number in at a time or? Maybe you've gone over this before, but I'm not remembering.
No, that's okay. We're bound by the regulations that the state has imposed, 50% capacity. So we have the capacity that's been calculated for each room. Does include our two election inspectors. So we are setting up, oh, and there's, for the library to be open, we are following the interim guidelines for office workers and the interim guidelines for retail space. There are also interim guidelines for polling places. So, um, so we have that in place as well. We've had to make sure that we're, we're doing what the state says we have to do to keep the, the election, election inspectors safe and to keep people who are coming in to vote safe. So we're setting up in the second chamber room and it's one-way traffic. We, you know, you come in past the circulation desk and you can turn right and go through the DVD room. And Jackie has everything taped out on the floor. We have to keep our six-foot distance. So there's axes and the tables are set up a certain way so that the ballot box is six feet away from the election inspector. And then when you leave, you would leave through the stacks and come out, you know, in between romance and crime fiction and walk through. And we'll have half members available to help make sure people could be escorted out and that they're not wandering around the library. I, I have to say, I don't think there's going to be-
Just going to say-
Not a huge turnout. Right.
No.
There's a lot of work to go through though.
It is. It is a lot, but you know, but that's, it's a good walkthrough for future elections.
Remind us of the hours?
10:00 AM to 7:00 PM. And those are my, my library updates.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you for a thorough report and Lisa, you need, you need help. You're way too, you're way too swamped. Hopefully the staff changes will, will Okay, foundation update, Nancy?
Uh, yeah, I honestly don't have an update because we haven't met yet. Oh, we were, we were due, were you expecting great news here?
No, I thought you were meeting, oh, no.
We were due to meet this week on Thursday, but we were postponing it. We are scheduled to meet next week on Thursday, the 5th.
Okay.
So we'll have a Zoom meeting then.
Okay.
We have a rather full agenda too. So the only thing that I think, Larry, that's happened since we last met here was the, or am I losing track of dates? Was the meeting that we had about the transferring the ownership of the building.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
So that was, Ellen, we missed you.
I did not get to that meeting.
I know, we missed you. But Joe filled in, was there. So Larry and Mike Trapani and I and Lisa met just to talk about what was on our minds about that, how we're feeling, what we're thinking at this point. I mean, we on the foundation side have a lot to do in terms of thinking about it. First of all, we need to hire legal help. So there are some steps that will have to be taken, but I would say, and Larry, thank you again. Larry put notes together and sent them out to everybody. Really appreciated that.
Am I right? I mean, it was pretty scribbly, but-
No, hey, I'll take scribbly. I, you know, my grandkids are still here, as I said, and I just couldn't even think beyond it. So I think that, you know, I can say that we all agreed that we should, the building ownership should be transferred. But the hows and the wherefores and everything that, you know, needs to be done, we, we don't know exactly how that's going to happen. So I, I think that's about, until the foundation meets and talks about that, that's probably all I can say at this point. Larry, Joe, if you want to add anything, Lisa?
Not really. I mean, I think the, you know, that, that an attorney will be, will be retained by the foundation in order to get the process moving forward.
Right.
We did talk some pros and cons in terms of, of the, you know, the, the ownership versus not. And it seemed like, you know, weighing in on the positive sides, it makes sense to transfer the property. The one thing that we want to be sure we do is to establish the relationship between the foundation and the board of trustees. If their role is not, you know, to, is, is not as stewards of the building, then their role, that role clearly needs to be defined so that it remains in support of what the library, what the library's mission is. So I think those are the things that, I mean, you know, transfer and then relationship are the things that need to be discussed and worked out.
Right, right. Because if we do do this, that, you know, does mean that the foundation truly has to look at its, you know, mission and responsibility and why are we there for? Uh, since we would no longer own a building. But so, yeah. So basically, I guess that's, that's it. If anybody has any thoughts or questions that you want me to carry to the foundation, I'm happy to do that beyond what we talked about at our meeting.
The foundation will, roof on the agenda as well?
Yeah, the roof. Yeah.
Remember that?
The roof.
Oh.
Whoa, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. And Lisa, I think you had reached, we never got a chance to talk, so I, we can talk later. And Lisa, I think, uh, you had reached, we never got a chance to talk, so I, we can talk later if you'd like, but, uh, you did reach out to Dan Festin at the Emerson Foundation. Because we think we should start, we should start looking for perhaps other opportunities for, um, for financial support.
Yeah. Yeah, I have a whole pile of things to talk to you about.
Oh, do you?
I have a, I have a file folder named Larry, so you, every time I come, I'm like, oh, I'll talk to Larry and drop it in my folder. So.
All right.
Plan a long, a long time. Over stuff.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll, uh, we'll, 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 other resources, other financial resources as well, but, um, I'm glad to hear the roof is still on the agenda, Nancy.
I, I am gonna add that our, our maintenance man, Andy Tumilio, he's worked here for, um, something like, I don't know, thirty-three years, crazy. And, uh, I had to call him yesterday. I had a, I had a, I had a separate Andy list, things I needed to tell him. And he's like, you know, roof is leaking a lot. I'm like, yeah, I know about the roof leaking. And so I don't understand why he felt the need to tell me, like, is it that much worse? I, I didn't go up there today. I, I did. But I haven't been up there yet. But I was thinking if Andy is actually bringing it to my attention, maybe the bigger problem than it normally is. But we've had a lot more rain than we have had in months.
That's right.
And I, you know what? I mean, that brings up a question too, Lisa. I mean, I think, you know, the roof project will not take place for several months. We may need to take, and Nancy, we may need to take some steps in the interim to put, you know, a couple of Band-Aids on this, just to be sure that we can at least get through the winter. So I think it's something to bring to the foundation board, and I think it's something we should look at as well, Lisa.
I'm sorry, Larry, you said a couple of Band-Aids?
Well, I mean, something, something to get us through the, yeah. Preferably waterproof.
Waterproof, yeah. I, I think, I think we can get those at Wegmans.
Yeah.
They're out, they're out of them.
Great, okay. Well, okay, but I think, I guess, in order to do, in order to have some discussion about that, we would need some specifics, right?
Well, yeah, yeah. You know, the discussion, it can just, in other words, I think it might be just worth mentioning that we may have to take, uh, have to do a temporary patch.
Right.
You can use that term instead of Band-Aids. They have to do some temporary patching, uh, in order to get us through the winter.
But wouldn't I, wouldn't you be doing that now?
Well, yeah, that's what I'm thinking, that we need to be doing that now. If, if Andy's bringing it up, you know, then Lisa, it's probably might need to be doing something.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe Lisa, you could do a little more exploring.
Uh, um, it's on my list. I could, I, I could bring my iPad up there and take a video that helps so you guys could see. We could do, I'll from there if you really want to.
Lisa, I could probably come out next week sometime too.
All right, that would be a big help. Yeah.
Yeah. So, so why don't we explore that anyway? See what we need to do just to get through the winter and go from there.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, uh, anything on the Friends?
I, I attended, um, the Friends had held a Zoom meeting last Wednesday night and I joined it for a, a little while. You know, they're just really struggling. It's, uh, how can you do the kinds of things that the Friends did for us and did their fundraising? When everything's well, um, they are trying to streamline a whole, a whole bunch of things. They are, for the most part, not technology savvy. Uh, and so by the end of the call, I was feeling like Jackie, Becky is our Friends liaison. Should I just ask Jackie to just do it, right? Just put out their newsletter, put out their annual membership drive by email, put, you know, with, with their input, but I just don't see that they have the capacity with current membership to, to do the kind of they need to do. They are gonna change their membership and right now it's quarterly and they're gonna do it once in January. They're, they're gonna send out everybody some notices, but then there was a huge discussion about the treasurer wanting to get that level of mail and nobody should have to touch the mail and I, I said, all the mail could come here. If, if anybody's worried, we can quarantine it. I don't think that we're really worried about the transmission of the COVID virus by mail. I, I, I just haven't seen that and not since the pandemic started. Everything I see right now, I just don't think that that's an issue, but that's the kind of meeting it was. Um, I think the officers decided to, uh, stay an extra year because they couldn't hold their annual meeting and, and they couldn't get other people to step up. So there's just a lot of frustration, um, and feeling like they can't do what they wanna do. They do have about nine thousand dollars in their checkbook right now. And then in January, sending out membership, which is the majority of the funds come in as, by membership. They will cut a check to the library for five thousand dollars, um, for us to use for whatever we think needs the, we, our, whatever our needs are, the, a priority. In the past, we've had to submit a wish list. But they wanted again to streamline it and they wanna be able to talk to their members and say, hey, your dollars do this. So they really would like us to say, this is what we did with your money.
Roof.
Um, which is, that's fine. Um, and we'll do that. But, uh, I, I felt they were very frustrated. Hard.
Okay. Any, anybody have other comments, questions?
I feel bad about that because they do so many fun and interesting and engaging things that bring people into the library. It's like, it's gotta be a terrible hit to just not have any of that this year.
Yeah, they, yeah, the, and that, that was hard on, on everybody. And then, um, a lot of, a lot of our, our friends are, um, isolated, just the whole pandemic. So I think it's just everything piled on was, was a bit of a, a downer kind of. But everybody was happy to see each other by Zoom, because this is the first meeting that they've been able to do that. And a bunch of people who've never attended a Friends meeting, um, joined us by Zoom, which I thought was really cool. That they hadn't been able to do it, you know, and make any meetings in the past. So there were definite positives.
Okay. All right. Okay, anybody, uh, what's next? Uh, the budget then, if that's, if there are any other questions or comments?
Lisa? The, uh, I had one relating to the payroll numbers, but I assume that's due to the, um, new the new positions and, oops, I don't, I don't have your report. Here. The new positions that you were talking about and the other changes, and I can't remember them all, but.
Uh, do you mean from payroll and related expenses from? Seventy-three, right? Yeah.
And that, as I understand, that is, is correct, uh, that, that it's, it's, it's primarily because of the, the changes in, in restructuring.
The new positions, so.
So I did, um, break it down a little bit and I, when you're looking at the, so there's, there's a couple of different parts to the um, projected deficit and one, one part is that we've been operating for a couple of years without the money that we would traditionally get from the library foundation. So, um, so yes, there's, there's this deficit. Um, approximately forty-six thousand, let's, let's say fifty thousand of that deficit could be attributed to changes in staffing. Some part has to do with wages and other part has to do with the increase in health benefits. Because if I'm adding full-time people, then more people are going to get, um, health benefits. I didn't include changes in pension here because I couldn't come, uh, uh, I just couldn't come up with a way to make it be apples to apples. A really good example for, for looking at how, how, how is there an increase with pension is, we have to offer membership to the New York State Retirement System to all employees. They actually have a time paper that says, yes, you offered it and I declined. For part-time employees. For full-time employees, it's mandatory.
Right.
Okay, so we have time employees that I said, yeah, I'm definitely joining. And Dory, our library historian, is, is one of those people. So she, I would like to increase her position from thirty-five hours a week to forty hours, so she's full-time. We are already contributing to her pension, so that's not an additional cost. The only additional cost to Dory's position going full-time, she's not gonna be on our health benefits because she has benefits through her husband's employer is the increase in hours. It's just wages only. So, you know, the, I, I know Dory isn't one of those more extreme examples. Um, I think other people who go full-time, well, full-time people, that's another story because it is mandatory participation in, uh, in the pension system. And that was the other thing, as I looked at wages, when you think about, what, first of all, we have a wage scale, but then thinking about what we pay people, what a living wage is, if, you know, if we, if, if it's mandatory that they contribute a certain percentage of their income and then they're also paying for health benefits, how much is the, their take home and is that really viable? I did change the, um, percentage increase, no, not percentage increase, the percentage of the library contribution to health and dental benefits to help offset some of this cost, but I couldn't, I couldn't, I could, if, if we want, we could look at really drastic cuts in what the library yields to health benefits. But I started with, right now, for example, uh, the library pays eighty percent of the health insurance premium for an individual. And then it goes down eighty, seventy, sixty, fifty. So, and that's, because there's four tiers of health insurance and the, the, fifty percent tier is a family plan. So I shifted all of those percentages from eighty down to seventy and I just brought it down. So it's seventy, sixty, fifty, forty. Uh, we could, we could change that even more. But that's the place I started at.
I would just, I would just be careful about fiddling with that because there's a, I think, a balance between salary and benefits and keeping, keeping and retaining, um, personnel. So I, you know, and retention is a big deal. You wanna make sure you, you maintain competitiveness, uh, you know, compared to other library folks of our, of our size and, and circulation. So I think for now, my concern is that, you know, I've expressed this before, is that we're using the done money to balance the budget. And, uh, more dramatic cuts may be necessary if we don't figure out how not to do this within a, I'd say, the next three years.
Yeah.
So I, 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 I think, yeah, that's, that's, and I wouldn't fiddle around too much with other benefits. At this point, we know that the budget is one hundred and thirty-one thousand, seven hundred, you know, out of, out of balance.
Right.
And so that's coming from the done money, but, you know, next year, we hope it's gonna be less and so on and so on. And we, we may have to make other cuts elsewhere. Or find other sources of revenue, which would be way better.
Right.
Lisa, can you just go over? We presently have two full-time personnel. As a result of this budget, there will be how many full-time? Am I misreading it?
There would be, um, let's see, uh, a new position for communications.
Right.
Um, increasing our community services coordinator, which is an existing to full-time. Our library historian existing to full-time. And then a new librarian that would fill what Jill is doing now. When Jill moves back. So I think we would have a total of five full-time.
Hi, are you sure it's not six?
It could be six.
I don't know. I'm just.
It could be six. I have to go back and count.
The new positions are, are library experiences, full-time.
Yep.
Communications and marketing, full-time. Community services coordinator, full-time.
Yeah.
And the historian, is that?
That, move that to his, historian to full-time. And then there's Jill and me. One, two, three, four, five, six.
Okay, all right. And, and do we have an idea? Sort of said here, can you tell, excuse me, Joe, I didn't need to do that. Can you say how many, how many will be laid off? How many will? I know you said it's ten to six.
Right. So right now, um, we already have, uh, three people that are like Annette is not working here right now, even though she's on our books. So, um, she is going to retire slash resign because she is taking care of somebody who's ill and she can't come back. So by the end of the year, she'll, she'll be resigned. Mary Popovich, I think, um, cannot work the hours that we need. She can't work weekends. She teaches skiing. So we met last week and we're talking, by December, we'll be having, she said, it's time for a separation of service. And I said, yes, I think it is. So, so Mary and Annette, Caleb is gonna be leaving. He's moving in with my son in New Hampshire. I'm like, really, Caleb? How could you do that? So we had, we, you know, it's, it's gonna happen. The one person that, um, I haven't had the conversation with is I am gonna lay Kathy Kirk off. She's currently our services assistant. So I'm gonna lay her off starting in December. She works in our children's room and, uh, we don't have work for her to do. Um, so, and we probably would have had layoffs around our children's room staff anyways because of the construction, but we've been able to move people around, um, and we, and Terry was here, but she retired. So we did, we've lost some people through attrition. I think other than the names that I have just mentioned, I think probably about two, maybe three more people would either decide to resign because they can't work the hours that we want. And I think there's one position that I really want to replace. It's a paraprofessional position, a library assistant, and I wanna replace it with a librarian. So that would be, and I don't think she would be able to move into what might be open for her to do. So, um, but I have to offer it to her because I have to work with civil service and seniority and all that stuff.
So, uh, Lisa, just a question then is, you know, with regard to the changes up ahead, I assume that this is now reflected in the budget? With the layoffs since one, it's not impacting the budget either up or down?
I don't think so. There will be, our, our.
Yeah, in other words, the payroll and expense line of seven seventy-three, that anticipates that you're going to. Yeah, in other words, the payroll and expense line of seven seventy-three, that anticipates that you're going to be, if some people are going to be laid off and then.
Yep, I took that into account. The only thing I, I did not take into account is our unemployment insurance will be higher. Don't, I did, um, try to bump it up a little bit, but I don't think we're going to see those numbers really hitting us twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
Lisa, I'm not that familiar with, um, you know, the civil service positions. So when, um, you hire someone, can they be hired and then take the test? Do they have to take the test and then be hired? How does that work?
So, um, we're going to talk about competitive positions. There are positions that are, I could just appoint. I could just appoint a cleaner. There's no list. It's not competitive. If a position is competitive, I have to hire by the list if there is one in existence. If there is no list in existence, you know, it expired. Or there are less than two people on the list, I am not required to hire from it. So I did, I do have a call in to Rachel. Um, she's my contact at Civil Service to see where I stand with some of the positions. Is there a list in existence? You know, is there not? Is it, has it been expired? So I can appoint somebody provisionally to, let's say that, let's say there's a librarian one position that I have. Do I have a title that's vacant? Yes, I do. Um, is there a list? No, there's no, the list expired February of last year, let's say. So now I can, I can have my interviews, uh, as long as they meet the minimum requirements for the civil service job description, I can provisionally appoint them. And then, uh, within, it used to be within like maybe five years, maybe eight years, like civil service would come back and say, hey, you know, there's a test. Um, I actually had my job as a librarian one here for, um, three or four years before it came up. And Mr. Erskine told me that I, I now had to take a test to keep my job, and I better do a good job scoring high because he needed paperwork. And he didn't want to have to do any paperwork for me. Like, okay, so, um, that, when the person takes the test, there are, there's two different kinds of tests. One is called training and experience, and people are awarded points. It's a point-based system. Um, and typically, the professional positions are a point-based system, training and experience. The other competitive tasks are an actual exam where you have to go and sit and take this test. Um, and then there's some kind of magic score. And I, I get everybody that's in the top three scoring positions. And that happened here, that the people who held the job, appointed provisionally, were not in the top three scoring positions. They couldn't keep their job. So, uh, that, that could happen.
And are all these, uh, the new positions, are they all considered competitive?
Yes, that's something I've been working on for several years, is to switch our positions over to competitive. The non-competitive positions, had a lot of restrictions, um, most notably hours. Um, the clerk position was subject to only, no more than fifty percent of the hours of a full-time person annually, weekly. So, um, it was just, it made scheduling a nightmare when you can't have people cover hours. So now, I, I don't think I have any public service staff in a non-competitive position.
Thank you. I'm sorry if I wasted other people's time, but I wasn't really sure how that all worked. One of the positions that you're proposing to be full-time, note you gave to the finance committee indicates starting, not, not starting till July, am I right?
Right. Because right now Jill is acting as the director of our library experience department, and she would shift back to her position as the director of family and community engagement. Um, and when she moves back to do our family space after our construction and our new spaces open, we would need to hire, uh, somebody to take over the upstairs staff.
So that gives you a little time too, to find someone and to fill the other positions, am I right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, and that money would not be spent till July?
Correct.
All right, super.
Okay, um, well, so we have a budget, uh, in front of us. Is, uh, are there, are there questions or comments from other folks having to do with, uh, with the budget? I think we're in a position, if, if, uh, if, if we're done here, I think we're in a position then to, um, to make a motion to, uh, accept a budget for twenty twenty-one. If I could have a motion.
I'll make that motion.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay, I will second it.
Jim, I think Jim's in. Jim got it. All right, so, uh, without other questions then, uh, all in favor?
Hi.
And opposed? No, carried. Okay, thank you. All right, so that's the, that's the, that's what we have on our, on our, um, on our agenda is, I don't believe there's anything else that will be, uh, we need to address, Lisa. Nothing else came up that I heard.
So, yeah, can I just, can I just say one thing? So this wasn't in the language of the motion for the budget, but my understanding is that the deficit will be covered this year by the done money. Correct?
Correct.
Yes.
For the one hundred thirty-one thousand seven hundred twenty-eight. We're agreeing, even though this budget shows a deficit, we're going to cover that with the done money. That takes care of next year.
It might be worth amending the, the motion just to, just to state that.
I think that's a good idea. I think it's unusual, I mean, to pass a budget that shows a big deficit.
If that, if that, if your motion is, is amended in that way?
Yeah, I think that makes sense. I think we should amend it too.
Okay. All right.
Do you need help, Dixie, with that? Are you okay?
I'm okay.
To this point, um, I don't know if you remember, the auditors, um, had some real concerns about, uh, about the motions that have been made to use the Dunbuck Quest. I've been working on the, a Dun spreadsheet to share with everybody to show, this is, um, this is where the money's been spent. And we, even though there was a motion to set aside $225,000 for twenty nineteen, I think it was twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. Um, Elaine didn't like that. Um, so now we have all of the done money in a board-designated account on our balance sheet, and I think we're going to need to make a specific resolution to unrestrict money for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, maybe twenty nineteen's been taken care of. And that's, I'm still struggling with some of the accounting language, but I'll be coming back at you with, with all that information. To make sure that we're doing stuff that Elaine wants us to do, so we don't get in trouble again.
Correct. Okay, so that the money is.
But I think, I should, I think we should all realize that this is a year where many organizations, aside from whatever, because of this year's circumstances, are going to be that state's going to be looking at auditing all kinds of organizations that are in the deficit, including itself. Okay? I don't know whether that's going to mean that the auditors are going to be more lenient or be of any difference, but everybody's struggling.
Okay.
As we say, we did not ask for a budget increase. We did not ask the people of our library just to vote for a budget increase this year.
Okay, well, um, that's it. Thank you all for, um, attending today. We are next, our next meeting is, uh, I have it for Tuesday, November twenty-fourth.
That's Thanksgiving week. Are you guys okay with that? Is that Thanksgiving?
Yeah. With me, yeah. I'm not going anywhere.
Turkey for dinner Thursday, but.
You know, even, even if you are going somewhere, take your computer, you, you know. So, all right, unless, unless we hear otherwise, our next meeting then is November twenty-fourth at four o'clock. And, uh, I think that's it. I think we can adjourn.
I'm going to just tell you guys, if you don't follow us on, um, Facebook, Lynn and some others did a really cute video, kind of a parody of, um, Ghostbusters. And if you haven't seen it, you should go look for it. I'll try and send a link. It's on our YouTube channel. I'll, I'll do that today, tonight before I leave because it's, I think it's just fun.
Okay.
Thank you.
Everybody.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Everybody.
Hi.
Bye now.